So, thank you all for being here today. My name is Mark Ryan, and I'm with the Peace Works. My co-moderator tonight is Adam McLeod, and she's from New Missouri. And this is actually the 11th consecutive year, I'm pretty sure, that we've held this event. And we, especially all of us, we're really recognition that climate change and related environmental concern are a climbing issue of our time. And they don't get nearly as much attention on making patriarchy out of office, people who are running for elections. We don't get nearly enough time to cover it. We want to make sure this is an issue that people are aware of and are doing it where they stand on. I should make this forum is sponsored by New Missouri Sierra Club, Legal Women Voters of Columbia, Boone County, New Missouri Peace Works, Renew Missouri, and Climate Leaders at Mizzou, and Local Motion. So, we have a broad coalition of groups. Some are working on different aspects of climate and environmental concern, but it's really a joint effort of all these groups. This year, for those who aren't familiar, I think most people here are familiar, but Columbia's electoral system works such that we have six wards, and each of those wards elects one representative to go to the city council. And that person is there for three years. And we rotate, so every year, we have two of the six ward representatives who are up for election. And our mayor is also on a three-year cycle. So this year is the year that the mayor is up for an election, as well as the third and fourth wards. And looking over to my right here, we've got in the third ward, Jackie Sample, who's running unopposed, but is here to share good information about where she stands. And then the fourth ward, you'll see Nick Foster, who's the incumbent seeking reelection, and contesting for the seat is Ron Graves. Looking to my left, we have three of the four candidates for mayor. And they are going from my left, Lucille Etoye, the fourth, am I pronouncing that right, Lucille? Okay, I'm trying. And Tanya He, and then the incumbent mayor, Barbara Buffalo. There's a fourth candidate, Blair Murphy, who has not responded to us, so they're not here now. Other than that, I will let you know that over the next couple of hours, we're going to be hearing from each of these candidates and hearing their responses to eight questions. We sent them the questions in advance. And that's always been our strategy, is we want whoever gets elected to know about these issues. So we give them the questions, and they have to seek out the answers. We even give them clues. We have little background information. Look for this, look at that, check this out. And hopefully, what that means is whoever's on the council, starting in April, is going to be well informed on these issues. Aside from that, I will mention, we are working on timekeeping such that people have either two minutes or three minutes, depending on the question. And the person who's going to ask each question is going to tell you how many minutes it has, or tell the candidates, they know that already anyway. But then, we'll hear what they have to say, we'll go down the row, and all of that will be, the time will be kept by Peter, right there. He says, "Two minutes, I better, I better speed this up." And, yeah, if you see Peter holding up a red sign, if you see that, that means stop. And if he has to stand up, then, you know, you're breaking the rules. Well, without further ado, I, I think we're going to move on, as much fun as it is, with me along here. Our first question, though, is going to be shared by Carolyn Ophren of Sierra Club. And I guess you need a mic.
Okay, so question number one. What challenges do you believe climate change poses to our city? Please elaborate on your plan for addressing the issue and the timeframe for various steps to address it. Would you support updating Columbia's renewable energy standard to include a goal for Columbia Water and Light to supply 100% of its electricity from renewable sources by a future date? If so, by what date? Would you support intermediate goals? And if so, what would you suggest? What steps do you believe the city should take in order to increase Columbia Water and Light's renewable energy portfolio? To answer, three minutes.
We're going to start this one down at the, the sand brown, if you want to get things started. You've got a mic there. Might need to get it done.
Sorry about that. So, challenges that climate change has on Columbia and really central Missouri, because it's more global than just Columbia, Missouri. But obviously, we have the extreme weather events through climate change that can cause frequently higher heat waves, increasing cooling demand, and heat-related illnesses. Severe storms and flooding become more common with that type of weather events. The impact on agriculture with the changing patterns of rain and drought, rising temperatures, stress livestock and crops, that is very important in our, in our area. Water supply issues, drought can put pressure on, on, on that. Public health risks, heat-related illnesses, et cetera. Impact on the local ecosystems, changes in temperature and precipitation, and precipitation, sorry, precipitation, alter the wildlife patterns. We have a lot of, of city living wildlife in our community. I see them almost every morning driving down Chapel Hill Road. And then, the economic strain of the weather can then, that can lead to increased costs for infrastructure repair, buckling sidewalks, streets that have potholes, et cetera. The, I, I would support upgrading and updating Columbia's renewable energy standard for an earlier goal, if we could find sustainable, renewable energy sources that cost the same or less than our standard energy. There are a lot of citizens in our community that have problems paying their bill. This leads to homelessness, and I really believe that we need to look at the cost to the consumer also, when it comes to, to, to that. Our energy bills in Columbia have gone up substantially, and I do not want to see that go up i- i- if it really doesn't need to at this point. Thank you.
Mark, so just go ahead. Go right ahead. Peter, are you ready? Well, climate change is a reality, and there's no question about that. And there's no question but that a lot of this is due to human activity, particularly when it comes to greenhouse gases. It is impacting us. I think Mark has talked about some of those things. I, what I am afraid of is what it might, what might happen in the future, not only with temperatures or tornadic activity and so forth. And we need to be attentive to that. And this is having an impact on us, and there are impacts on the surrounding area in terms of rural areas and farmers in particular. I think that we need to be good citizens of the earth. And it's not simply a matter of how this is impacting us, it's a matter of how it's impacting the planet as a whole, and our part in that. And so, it's important for us as a community, and as a leader in the state, I think, to take the initiative, to do the things that we need to do to reduce greenhouse gases in our community. The CAP does a great job of outlining a number of those things that, that we can do and that we should do. It's also, all of this seems to be a moving target. And I think we're going to need to remain nimble as possible as we address this. You know, there are different questions about when Sykesston is going to close, and whether, and we would end our contract there. It could happen sooner rather than later. And one of my concerns right now is that we are going to need to replace those, that source, and we shouldn't be replacing with renewable energy. My concern is that we have the power purchase agreements in place, when we need to have them in place, so that we can replace what we would lose with Sykes, Sykesston, and what we will lose with Sykesston. That will take some time to get done. And again, it's kind of a moving target, and I think we need to be nimble about that. So to that end, I do support updating the renewable energy standard to 100%, and I would want to set that goal at 2035. That is an ambitious goal, but I think the times are, are calling on us to be ambitious, to be proactive, to be innovative. And again, if we're going to put those PTAs in place, we need to go ahead and get started on that. And I think that pretty much covers what I would say about that.
So, as the daughter of a conservationist and a child of the 80s, who was served a big guilt trip for using aerosol Aquaman for years and running the ozone layer, climate change and climate issues has been a part of my entire life. I do not use Aquaman anymore. Anyway, I do think we are seeing the climate extremes. I find it very alarming. The science behind it is much more convincing than just talking about ozone. I sat on the Climate and Environment Commission a couple of years ago, and one, I'll never forget, one evening at discussion, a commissioner came in and said that he, he was talking about wildfires, and was talking about the insurance industry, and how a lot of homeowners' policies are beginning to change in these areas of concern, where fire was no longer going to be covered. And so, he encouraged, like by natural disaster fire, so he encouraged everybody, "Without all of your landscaping, and replace it with rocks," because the less flammable things you have around your house, the safer your house is, less likely it is to burn. And I left that meeting scared about the possibility. And then, with all the fires that have just happened in California, my brain has immediately snapped back to that conversation. And so, when we're talking about climate change, we're talking about, you know, talking about insurance, you know, we're talking about all these things, and it impacts so many different things. And so, that's something that's really stuck out to me, as I've learned more about this. As far as being on council and renewable energy, I'm very much in support of renewable energy. I do have concerns with the direction of federal government policy, and if we're going to have federal funding in place, and/or even state funding at this point, to subsidize any efforts our city may put forward. And so, we're going to have to either get really creative with the budget, or hope that we can have other grants or things in place at other levels of government, and I'm not sure if that's going to happen. For the renewable energy goal, I really, and the information that I read, and how I interpret it, was the interim goal was set at 40% by 2030. And I believe what I read is that Columbia Water and Light is at 29%. Do you know, Karen, do you know that's accurate?
About 25%.
25%. So, to get from 25 to 100 by 2035, that's like a 60% increase. And so, I think I'm interested and ready to engage and figure out how we can make that happen, because that's going to be a quick change.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So, to start off, yes, climate change is obviously real, is a present danger, but unfortunately, it is not, oh, sorry. Unfortunately, the effects of climate change are not borne out equally by everyone on the planet, specifically in this city. And it is a problem that will continue to worsen. Black people, people of color, indigenous, and a growing number of poor white people often face the most dire consequences of the climate crisis. For example, the local rate of respiratory conditions for black residents are significantly higher than their white peers. And if I imagine, if you were to do a similar study of those same respiratory illnesses within poor white communities versus wealthy white communities, you would find a similarly staggering disparity between the two. So, a lot of this climate issue is a matter of haves and have-nots, and which human lives, which lives and which ecosystems are seen as disposable. With regard to the disposable ecosystems, they just so happen to be the ones that are always in the communities of black people, brown people, indigenous people, and poor white people. And this is a holdover from, frankly, primary contradictions of settler colonialism and capitalism in America, because those are the two driving forces for the hierarchy of human value in America. The fossil fuel industry was born of the Industrial Revolution, which was born of slavery, which was born of colonialism. So, you have to follow your primary contradictions and then work your way to a solution. In terms of the climate goals for the city, I do support trying to reach 100% renewables by 2035, but based on the numbers that are out there right now, it doesn't seem like it's a really viable plan. But I don't mind the idea of trying to attain it nonetheless. Yeah, lastly, so environmental racism and the climate crisis are inevitably linked, and in order to fight the climate crisis, we have to dismantle the forces that would otherwise continue their destructive arrogance towards humanity and nature itself.
Hi, I'm Tanya. So, I would say that, you know, climate change has been occurring since we've had the atmosphere, and whether that is the Ice Age or now everything that is warming, climate change can pose a challenge in two ways. Colombians need to supply its residents with inexpensive, reliable, and safe energy. And then, the second is the infrastructure needs to be handled in a way that can take on the increased precipitation. As the climate is warming, especially in the winter, the demand is, for heating is less. However, the demand for cooling in the summer is greater. Yet, not everyone has air conditioning. Finding renewable energy is a challenge, and we should support projects that will be able to handle energy that delivers during peak times. There are wind and solar projects that deserve our attention, but the new nuclear that people are investigating should also be continued to look at, even though historically, that has been shunned, in case there's a new meaning with the new technology. If we are going to encourage the use of electric vehicles, we need the infrastructure and the energy supply to handle it. At the same time, we need to encourage residents to purchase energy-saving appliances by demonstrating purchases that can offset the cost. And we have seen, according to the World Bank, our emissions are at levels seen in the 1990s per capita, like that of the 1970s. So, the free markets are working, even though it doesn't always seem like that. My position would be that while things are going slower than what we would like, we need to look at the markets and what is reliable and affordable, and that does not further harm the environment. I would support doing all that we can with where people can still afford the energy, and also making market-driven, smart decisions as we go along, so that we don't overextend ourselves in something that turns out not to be in our best interest. And finally, I would say, we also can do things that are popular with our population, and that is encouraging carpools and other things like that, that can help everyone be excited and positive about the changes we need to, to improve our community. Thank you.
Well, good evening, and thanks to all the groups for hosting this evening. It's always a good turnout for, for this event. Obviously, I am aware of climate change, having been the project manager for the development of our Climate Action Adaptation Plan. And in it, we talk about the already-changing climate and the experiences we had up until 2019. I think one of the important things that hits me is that when we were sitting up here in 2022 for the last campaign that I was involved in, I was able to say, you know, two years ago is the hottest summer on record, and the following year is the hottest summer on record, and it's been the hottest summer on record every year since. And so, when we talk about local impacts, you know, the local impacts on our built environment, our urban heat islands, the Show Me Heat program that Office of Sustainability is working on right now, that's in its third phase, which is the Show Me Relief program, which they're looking at what can we actually do, working in the neighborhoods to get things done. That doesn't go away unless we keep working on it. Greenhouse gas emissions, while they have decreased since we first started measuring them, they're still not at an aggressive enough rate to us to meet our goals of our greenhouse gas goals of 100% by 2060. So, when we think about where we have the power to change, you know, water and light makes up a lot, large part of our electricity consumption, which our electricity is the biggest contributor to our local, the way that we measure Scope One and Scope Two emissions, and it's a piece of it, right? And so, we've been working with the utility, and I'll tell you, it goes frustrating from being like a commissioner, like a climate, I was on the EEC, and then being a staff member, and now being here, you're like, it really does go really slow. And I know Mark tells me every month, like, you need to be faster, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying. So, we have asked the utility to come back to us with more aggressive goals for meeting our renewable energy. We did ask them to work with the, the Energy Authority, with like what's real, what's potentially coming down the pipeline, because we do want to make sure it continues to be affordable for, for our neighbors. We also want to signal to the markets that we have, that have a buyer in us. We want more renewable energy. And I'll tell you, I'm a little bit concerned right now with seeing all the pauses from executive orders coming out of the White House, which are pausing things like the development of new wind farms that are supposed to come on in the Midwest, which we are relying on. We're relying on this with the green belt, the green belt line coming through, for that renewable energy for us to be able, because we have contracts in place. And so, a concern I do have, obviously, is what's feasible for us to put in. So, we've asked in this ordinance, when it comes to us, to also have pieces in place, which basically can kind of switch the lever on as like Sykesston closes down, which is one of our dirtiest coal plants that we have. When it finally closes down, that it will automatically be replaced with the renewables, or we'll put out the RFPs now. So, that's what we've requested for the utility to put in place, because it's not just our future, it's my children's future, and if they decide to have children, their, their future too.
Hi, everyone. We are going to move on to the next question, which will be read by Jack, if you could please.
Good evening. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. I have question number two, and I'm going to read it to you. What energy efficiency programs do you think the utility should offer for low-income residents, including both renters and homeowners? Do you support implementing a program like Pay as You Save? What steps would you take to ensure utility customers are made aware of any new or existing energy efficiency offerings? You have two minutes. Sure.
We're going to start with Barbara. Okay, okay, I'm holding a mic, I don't know where to start. So, so, yeah, so Pay as You Save, I think the craziest thing about this is that this was, this was presented to the utility in Columbia at our Renewable Energy Conference like a decade ago, and Arkansas has already been doing this. So, this idea is Pay as You Save is that you're paying, you're paying off the cost of the improvements to your facility or your rental unit, whatever it is, on the utility bill, and it stays with the property. This idea is it can stay with the property, kind of go, because that's who's going to benefit from the reduced energy. The one thing that I'll say is that I've seen success in other communities. A, a community in Colorado, one of the things that they did, which we are actually doing right now, is that they used some of their stimulus funds, this was under ARA, the American Recovery and Rescue Act, which now is American Recovery Plan Act. They used some of their funds for that, to put in, the city owned its own electric utility, and they put basically grants ahead, and they set up for, they set a forecast out for rental energy efficiency standards, and they said, "Well, we have money right now, landlords or property owners, or even homeowners, to use the money now to reduce your energy usage." And then, but by a certain time, the standards have to, you have to be up to a certain standard, so you might as well take ahead of our grants right now. So, we're doing that right now with our ARPA funds for income-qualified homeowners. Housing Department, our Community Connectors programs have been going door-to-door in neighborhoods where they know they are already requesting utility assistance, maybe frequently at the same property, to try to kind of work with them to get these improvements in place. And our hope is, is that if we have then, I don't imagine we'll have leftover money, right? That'd be great if we did, to get more people in the program. But the hope is, is that this pilot program's proved successful, that we can then continue it with our own funds, rather than just using the ARPA funds. So, that's just one example, but there's lots of opportunities to really partner with our community groups that are working in neighborhoods, and with some of our population that really could use assistance. But the biggest issue we always have is people knowing about the programs we have. And so, that's where the Community Connectors program comes in, and doing that door-to-door work.
Okay, so, I would say, yes, that Pay as You Save is a great idea, as, you know, and as the city is covering its costs to provide the energy and the service, the people are buying energy-efficient appliances, and, you know, in the future, after the ARPA funds and everything, perhaps maybe a one-time rebate as, for purchasing those energy-efficient appliances, and then people can, you know, show proof, and then that way, it's documented for any documentation that they would need. And I know that people are always wanting to do what they can, but they also have to do what's affordable for them. And so, I think just coming up with as many ideas as we can to help the end user be successful, not only personally, but how it affects the rest of our community.
Thank you. Yes, I would support implementation of a pay system, because it's just a, it's a simpler way that, it's a method that would not put the cost burden on disproportionately low-income people for the transition to more renewable energy standards. I believe that it has, we have to have the smart meters citywide before we could really, or at least a decent amount of coverage with the smart monitors, before it could be implemented in full. And in terms of how to make people more aware of the programs, I mean, we already have the, the little mailer that goes out with the utility bills, so we could just include things in there, text alerts, emails alerts, RSS feeds. And I would also like to supplement the city's building inspection codes with a green code that would serve as a voluntary framework, based on the International Green Construction Code, and that would just have stricter standards in new developments. And those who opt in for the initiative will stand to gain benefits like accelerated permitting where possible. The aim would be to provide compliance options for achieving LEAP Platinum status, or creating a net-zero energy building, which would underscore the city's commitment to sustainable construction practices.
So, yeah, the Pay as You Save programs, I think those are a very good idea. I enjoyed reading about them. I think they are, they are good for the homeowners. The only concern I have with them is that if, if somebody owns the home, then rents the home, I'm concerned about the homeowner passing on the cost to a renter, and I don't know how to make sure that that doesn't happen, but that is a concern I have. But in general, the Pay as You Save programs, I think, is a good place to start. And as far as making sure homeowners are aware of these programs, I think currently, that's really hard. There's various ways to try to reach people. There are the inserts in the utility bills. I don't know that a lot of people actually read them, and then that's extra resources in itself. That's extra paper, all those types of things. The social media reaching out to people and other platforms is a moving target, and I think the Community Connectors program is probably going to be key in moving forward to try to reach the people that need to be reached. So, I'm hopeful that the city will continue to think about the best ways to meet the people who need to get this information, because that could definitely be important.
Well, it's noted that the city does have some really fine programs to encourage installation of energy-efficient appliances and so forth, and I, thank you. And I've taken advantage of these in, in our own home. When we had mini-splitts put into our upstairs, replacing window units, the city had a program to help support the purchase of those. Sometime, hopefully in the next month or so, we're going to begin the installation of solar panels at our home, which should supply, if they're right, 100, at least 100% of our need for energy at our home. So, I use these things, and I'm glad to use them, there's no question that it makes it There's no question that it makes it easier to participate. But each time I do, and even beyond that, I'm concerned about folks who are just not able to participate in that. While these things are great and they make it more affordable, it still means that a lot of these things are out of the range of affordability for many people. So I'm excited about, about the pays program and the possibility of using that. One of the things that we have to keep, and then let me just speak real quickly to letting people know. I know because I'm pretty well connected and I have been for a long time, just paying attention to what's going on in the community and what happens at the city and how I can best do these things. But there are a lot of people who are busy from day to day and it's all they can do to just get by. So communicating with people in the community is a challenge already. There are so many different ways to do that, but there are some things that were, that are coming online with the Community Connectors. Be heard is something that is becoming to be accepted and people expect to find out the information they want there. And well, they should. So we need to continue to do that, continue to find ways to reach out, continue to find ways especially to help those who struggle the most to pay for the energy and for, and for the other needs that they have as a household.
Okay, thank you. So I live in the parts of Columbia that is not, is not, I'm not a customer of the city utility. I'm part of Blue Electric. So for 20 years I've lived in that area and that, so that may be some programs that the city may offer that I kind of think that they should, they can offer, and I apologize. Obviously, free and low cost energy audits for, for low income individuals. And this is for low income individuals. Free energy audits, direct, and install, funding for direct install measures, LED bulbs, weather stripping, things as such, like there's some sort of discount on that. Weatherization assistance for homeowners and renters that have landlord, landlord approval. Partner with weather, governmental weatherization programs to fund insulation, air sealing and HVAC improvements for both low income and renters. Energy efficient appliance replacement, having, having rebates or incentives for replacing old refrigerators, et cetera, in both low income houses, homeowners, but also in, in rental units that are in section eight. I would support the programs such as pay as you save. I think it's a great program. I think it would really incentivize people to do the, the things that they need to do to save fun, to save money as they, as they go. Even one thing that I really think is, is helping low income landlords, landlords that rent to low income with incentives also for their housing.
Do you think anyone would know how to turn the air off? Because if Mark comes back, it's blowing on him. That's why he is having such a coughing fit. And the heat and air conditioning buttons may be over there. So I don't know. Some, some person may feel comfortable at Tinkers with Mike. If he comes back, it's not gonna be good for him.
Third question.
Next, we're going for question three. We're gonna have Barbara. Go ahead.
Yes, not. Okay, you have three minutes each for this question. Do you support implementing minimum energy efficiency standards for existing rental housing in Columbia? And if so, over what timeline would this be phased in?
That's what I got? Yes, I think implementing minimum efficiency standards for rental housing is, is important. I think it can, there are significant benefits for it, but there's also challenges that have to be addressed also. Reducing energy burden for renters, obviously, the first thing. Most, most, most renters live in older inefficient housing. We see that on East Campus right now. You know, setting, trying to find a place for my son to live next semester. You know, we set minimum standards to ensure renters aren't stuck with high energy bills. The other thing is improving health and comfort for a home, lower carbon emissions. And it, it levels the playing field if we do have energy efficient standards because everybody has to come with upgrades and make everything efficient. So it makes everything even. Challenges are the cars, but cost burdens to the landlords. It can be expensive, especially for somebody that may only own one rental home. That's the, and it should, it really should offer incentives, rebates, possibly low interest loans to those landlords to help them make those improvements. There's also the risk of raising the rate too high because of the cost of those, of those updates. And how do you, and the third thing would be compliance. How do you ensure that they really follow the rules? My first life before I got into not-for-profit was in the construction and, and design field. And you could hide that a lot of things behind your head. So, you know, you need to have some energy efficient inspections to make sure. One thing that, that I would like to see is maybe having every rental unit be required to do an energy audit. And that information is required to be on the rental advertising, the information for the home and how it, how it rates, you know, zero to 100, you know, however a standard type of thing would work. But that would also give people the opportunity to understand kind of maybe what those costs are. Also, when they do advertise for their rental, they should probably have to have the average cost per year for the previous five years to show people what they can anticipate in the cost for the utilities.
Well, in a word, yes, that's important. And I, I, I think all the challenges that are already mentioned are, are there. In no, in no small part, the cost that it would be to the, to the landlord, to the rental owners. But, you know, I'm, I'm recalling a time when I was in graduate school and I lived in a cracker box of an apartment that actually had been remodeled. But not everything had been touched in a way that would be best. And in the bathroom, over the tub was a window and a window shade. And in the night or in the day, when it was kind of cool, the moon was blowing shade back and forth. Wasn't very inviting to get into the tub. And so these are the kind of things that people still face. And I think that one of the things we want to do is incentivize landlords, not only about, in the ways that make, that we might do in terms of incentivizing with loans that low cost rates and so forth, but also to, to help them and encourage them when they publicize the needs that they have. I have a real concern for people who are of low income and who struggle to pay their utilities and for everything else. So if you have a unit that is more energy efficient, that makes it a more marketable unit in my mind. We have directed city staff to bring a proposal to us to implement policies regarding minimum standards and processes for mental energy efficiency. And I look forward to hearing from them.
Okay, so for most things in government, you can draw connections between all of the layers, once you start talking. And in my mind, the way my brain is trying to organize this information, firstly, I say, yes, I support the rental regulations or the energy efficiency for rentals. My brain immediately goes to planning, how are we gonna do that? Because that's how my brain works and that's where the layers come in. And I think we need to decide as a city, are we going to have a big discussion about this with various phases? Or are we going to try to independently discuss each area separately, which could lose some organization and actual efficiency of the conversation in the action around the problem? I think it's important, in order to move in this direction, that we need to maybe attack the low income group, if you will, first. And that may be something such as the, the general rental check-ins on rental properties, just checking and saying, this is where you're at, you could be better, kind of situation. And then moving into the tune-up programs, which I was very intrigued from reading about. Saying, you know, not only have we done this check-in, we now we know where you are. This is what you need to fix it or address it. These are the programs available to assist. And then moving on, you know, not even talking about the, the existing rentals, but the newer rentals that are being built. Making sure that there are initiatives in place to those builders. And I know that that can be a difficult conversation with developers, that I think is an important conversation to have and offer them initiatives to make sure that they're working towards rental efficient, energy efficiency. We've had, everybody's aware, we've had a lot of rental properties built, all the apartment buildings in recent years. There's probably more to come. So I think that's a really important part of this conversation. And then obviously moving on to the, the existing rental energy efficiency standards and making sure that those are in place. But I do think we, we need to decide how we're gonna do that in, I, you know, government. So we'll see what happens. One of the things that I noticed in the information that was sent to us, I believe it was, and I don't know the answer to this question, from 2022, that staff, city staff did tell or recommend to the council that a date would be established by which all rental housing will be required to meet basic energy efficiency standards at license renewal. So I'm not sure what the outcome of that was. I have not been able to find that information yet. So this has been discussed and I'm interested to see what became of that city recommendation.
Sorry, a little bit. So I do support a, an energy efficiency standard for current, current residential dwellings, businesses and new developments. And with regard to new developments, I mentioned earlier, the LEED Platinum status, that would be something that I would seek to be the standard for new, for new dwellings in the, in the city. And to that end, I believe that some of the emphasis needs to be on waste reduction towards these efficiency, these efficiency goals for the dwellings and businesses. So I would like to aim for, sorry, I wrote this way too small. My goal would be to reduce food waste by 60% and increase per capita waste generation by 15% by 2035. And I would like to aim for a reuse rate of 20% of all waste produced in the city. And to have an 80% waste diversion, waste diversion rate without landfills or incinerators by 2035. To address local food waste, I would prioritize composting. Providing, achieving this by providing food waste drop, food waste drop off points throughout the city, like at the CCU A farmer's market, hosting workshops to teach residents how to compost at home. In terms of helping people throughout the city with meeting these energy standards, there are some existing programs that are already available, like through CCU A. And I believe Water and Light, I don't know if they still have it, but they did at one point in time, have weatherization, like a bundle that they would send out to you if you just request it. So increasing funding for those local programs that are already in place to help those, help with those needs. And I would also like to place a green, greenhouse energy, greenhouse gas, sorry, emission limit on commercial buildings larger than 10,000 square feet. For properties that exceed the carbon neutral limits, there'd be consequences such as fines up to $150 per metric tonne, scheduled to be enforced as early as 2028. And a bill that would require all food enterprise facilities larger than 1,500 square feet to have a organic diversion program.
All right. So I would look to the market to motivate the rental homeowner into energy efficiency. And I would do that through encouraging the energy efficiency through rewards as well as education. That if people understood that energy efficiency products can pay for themselves or a good portion of their expense in the long run, they would choose them. And as I said before, the market is going to motivate the behavior change that we want. As younger renters, renters look at their choices in Columbia and with the education that they have received, not only from their parents, but through schooling, they will have the desire to live in energy efficient rentals. I have already seen great improvement in the last five years with all kinds of old buildings, old apartments and old houses having tremendous upgrades because of the competitive market that we are living in. As well as, I believe that someone from the city, whether that's the, someone from the electric department or sustainability, could also have a regular and rotating presentation that they do to the real estate organizations, as well as to different neighborhood groups, as well as any other professional groups that have the owners present. Because what we're wanting is a shift in thinking. And to have that shift in thinking, people have that intrinsic bottom line that they're trying to balance. And they may emotionally agree with everything that you are asking, but if they don't have the financial wherewithal to do that. And they're also looking sometimes at people in a low income range. And so it's like to raise the rent on people that may not be able to afford it versus putting it off, putting it off, putting it off. And then five or 10 years go by. And with the inflation being 20% basically at this point, it's, it's a cat chasing its tail. You know, they, they have interactions with the renters. They want the renters to be able to have a good quality of life, but they also want to improve the building that the renter is living in. And so I think if we look to the markets overall, we're going to find that over time we get what we want. Thank you.
Well, I respectfully disagree that the market will take care of this. And I say, no, no, it's fine. But I say this because right now we're in a housing crisis and people are staying in, staying in properties that aren't efficient because they have a place to stay. And so, you know, part of, part of this conversation, right? They're all complex, they're all related. So having enough housing, having efficient housing is, is obviously key because everybody deserves a safe place to live. I appreciate, Rodney mentioned the, the score. And yes, like the home efficiency score, which Water and Light does, is a thing that we require in new home construction to be advertised so that you know how it compares to other similarly sized and designed homes. And it is something that we, we've talked about putting on our rental certificates and rental inspections. We just changed the inspection, inspection cycle to five years from six. Theoretically, it was three years, but everyone would just automatically get an additional one, an additional term. So it went to six years. So one of the things, whenever we talk about this, should be within five-year cycles. Like this idea of buy something within a five-year time period. Obviously, priding everyone within five years is not as realistic as we want since we have 52% rental in the city of Columbia, like 24,000 households or units to worry about. So one of the things that, that's kind of what we're practicing right now about ARPA funds is putting those grants out there to try to help reduce for homeowners right now, and I want to replicate it. Years ago, we looked into how much money goes into utility assistance. In the city alone, we've upped this in the last two years and $600,000 goes into utility assistance. And if you think about that, that's helping people pay that bill, right? That one bill. And you can't keep asking for it, right? You know, you're living on how often you can ask for it, how many seasons. And that's just us. Central Missouri Community Action Agency is also paying funds towards this. So we proposed the need for doing rental efficiency standards because we kept throwing money at this and hoping that for a different outcome. And what we know is that if we actually put the money in investing in these structures, it not only helps people reduce on the utility bills, but it makes their home more comfortable. It's more comfortable to live in and doesn't have as many gaps in it. When we talk about indoor air quality, it's creating a better environment for people to be. And so putting this fund And so putting this funding towards that is one thing that I think that we need to focus on. But obviously, at the same time, we're in this housing crisis. People are struggling to make their ends meet. And so them having the ability to do these utility assistance, I don't want to get rid of that until we get the efficiency in place. But to me, I think of it as a yes and. And so when I think about our home efficiency score that we do, developed from Department of Energy's Home Energy Score, but it thinks about the actual existing built environment. Having the advertisement, we have a map out now. So any property that's going through it, you can see. And that does help with, I mean, the market idea is that you want to do that advertising. But unfortunately, we don't have enough units yet. Okay, I'll stop. All right, for question four, we're gonna have Carolyn Amperin come up and read. So sorry, Carolyn, you just sat down.
Okay, question number four. Do you think we should consider the needs of terrestrial and aquatic floor and fauna, wildlife habitat, and streams when making annexation, development, and parks decisions? How is Columbia to grow in a way that discourages sprawl, encourages biodiversity, maintains close access to natural areas, and enables the viability of urban agriculture and small farms in close proximity to settled areas? You have three minutes for this question.
So yes, this has actually been a conversation that we just recently had when we were talking about with the Gans Creek discussion. And a big part of that was taking advantage, too, of some of our natural assets, which is the Missouri Department of Conservation, who have funds for helping put together these natural assessments that you can put into how you evaluate both land, but then also the management of it. One of the conversations that we've had, this actually makes me think of the previous question as well. When we talk about the staff to also do some of these evaluations, the city has been woefully understaffed, like trying to say proactive with being ahead of the curve on some of these issues. So if you have staff within community development that are doing these evaluations, right now, they're struggling just to evaluate what's coming through. And so what we're asking is either a partnership with our partners, like Missouri Department of Conservation on these natural assessments, or increasing the staff, which is also, I think, something I brought up in the 2022 campaign, the idea of having people on staff to do this. One of the conversations that we've had as well is around when we're thinking about how we grow as a community. Working with Boone County, and they're going through their master plan right now, and identifying those sensitive areas that, as a growing community, is a thriving community. You don't want to be stayed, and you don't want to be declining, right? Because then that means other things are happening to your local economy. But how can we do it in partnership with our natural areas around us? And so Boone County, as they're going through their master plan, we had city staff and community members, and some of us were involved in that process, so that we can identify those as the city limits grow, and we're taking those into place as we grow. In the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, there are six tension points in it. And those tension points, we brought this conversation up because we knew that not everything will be perfect in rose-colored lens glasses as you develop this. And one of them was actually this discussion around the balance between the need for development, like housing development, and preservation of natural spaces. And in that tension point, we talked about this, and the assessment needed. This evaluation, as you weigh these things, how do you have both the increase in workforce housing or areas for people to recreate, with also thinking about how do we take care of the natural land around us? So it's here for our and our, wills our future generations.
Maneuvering through this discussion. So yes, I would say that, you know, a healthy environment is very good for people. These decisions need to be studied with the input of people and experts from across the spectrum. So I did speak up at the city council, and I talked about having, you know, both sides take a walk together and go through, where are the challenges? And listen to each other. Because I think what's going on is that because of the growth and because of COVID, where, you know, people realized that they liked being outdoors again, and all the studies that have been done, you know, since we started with the phones and the high computer time and all this sort of stuff in the last 20 to 25 years, and what that does to everyone's mental health. You could clearly see that both sides, the people who were very concerned about the environment and the parents who were very concerned about their kids' mental health, and they both earnestly wanted, their position was from a place of passion and a place of concern. And so what I think would have been a better planning part from the beginning is to have those conversations with both sides. Anticipate who is going to be concerned about any growth development and have those conversations before we get to the point where then it's a win-lose situation. And so I think that it is imperative that we look at our long-term goals, that we recognize that nature cannot be reproduced once it is concreted over. And we also need to realize that as we grow as a city, we have to figure out ways to keep our mental health strong, and especially for our youth, and engage the youth with outdoor activities. But not at the expense of these types of creeps and things like that. That again, you know, once the pollution has happened, it is forever changed. So I would like to have deep discussions at the very beginning when it is an idea so that both sides can walk and come together. And then the plan that will ultimately be voted upon will have already worked through all those very important discussions. Thank you.
So, short answer, yes, we do need to be, we need to consider the needs of the local ecology, the floor, and fauna in new developments. Because if the ecosystems scrap out, then none of this, none of the rest of the stuff matters. And right now, the country is racing towards a future where the ecosystems cannot support complex life forms. So this is a matter of the survival of our species. So if we are going to do this in earnest based on science and documented history, we have to start prioritizing the maintenance and enhancement of these ecosystems in our new developments. So new developments need to be made in harmony with the natural environment, rather than seeking to dominate the natural environment or replace the natural environment and thinking that we're gonna go back years later and clean back up with some new invention, new inventions that are gonna clean the air and clean the water. Only we just killed everything that already does that. It's just dumb. Sorry. And to that end, sorry, I got a little sidetracked. But to that end, I would like to go heavy on converting a lot of the impervious surfaces that we have on the north side, in particular, in the first ward. I think it's close to half of the surfaces in the first ward are impervious, meaning there are no ecological use to anyone. And those are spaces that could easily be agrarian spaces. And I would like to see the development of an agrarian economy on the north side so that we can have, you know, food sovereignty and, you know, clean waterways and clean air. Because a lot of the, a lot of the air quality monitoring sites on the north side have either been inactive or just have been inactive for a long time. There's one on around the Paris or Bay Harbor area. And when I called the Department of Natural Resources, they said it had been inactive since the 90s. So that's the kind of game that is being played with people's lives. You know, if you have air quality monitoring sites in the city, why are all of them not on? And why are they, and especially in the areas where the expressway, not expressway, they don't have expressways here, highways, where the highway runs adjacent to a residential area, you would think that all the air quality monitoring sites would be on in that area and not just scanning for just like the baseline that we have to, but for all a wider array of toxic pollutants. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. I'll just ask.
All right, so yes, I, again, as I said, I'm the daughter of a conservationist. So when my dad retired, he was chief of fisheries in the Department of Conservation. So this has been my life, walking in streams. And my bug collection in high school was actually aquatic bugs. Because we could do that, because that's his life. So my life has been spent, well, I didn't like to fish, but I would go fishing, the streams and everything, so this has been my life. And I, my dad always taught me to respect the environment and to protect it as much as possible. And so I do think as we grow and annex, or whatever it is that we're doing, that we do need to have people who can speak to that. They have a different level of expertise, I'm telling you, I lived it. Very different level of expertise and insight and knowledge into how our actions as mankind is impacting things that we may not be able to see. And then they can really explain, okay, you may not be able to see that, but this is how this is gonna impact you. And so it's a really valuable perspective for us to have available to us. As far as encouraging and protecting biodiversity as we do continue to grow, I think we can do some things, looking at our already developed spaces and talking about how to make those more population dense when possible, as well as looking at possibly increasing use of mixed-use zoning so that we can pack things in spaces. I also really, I really enjoy our trail system. I really would like to see all parts of our city connected by the trail system with accessible pedestrian pathways, bike pathways. That's, I, where I previously lived, we lived really close to a trail, and I used it often. Where I live now, we have no access, and I can't even like walk to the trail because there's no shoulder on the road where I'd have to walk to to get to the trail, and I really, really miss it. So I really would like to see an increase in trail connectivity. And going back to kind of new developments, as we are moving out, the whole incentivizing again, the use of native plants, landscaping, and permaculture in new developments, I think would be a great discussion to have. And the recent survey that the city did, people really appreciate all of the parks that we have. And so I think it's really important to protect those parks and keep them healthy. And I'm also really intrigued by the idea of zoning or just having open, welcome space for more community or neighborhood garden plots or food forests, or whatever that's gonna look like. I'm really intrigued by that idea and would love to have a discussion, maybe save some space in our city for those things to happen.
Well, I want to pick up on what Jack just said about greater density. I think that when we're thinking about these issues, we need, our minds turn almost immediately to the outskirts of the city as we grow. And this is one of the largest challenges we have as a city in many different ways. This is one of those ways. Infrastructure is another way that we're challenged, and housing is a critical way in which we're being challenged because of the lack of housing we have now and the rate of growth that we're having as a city in terms of our population. So we need to be looking at density and encouraging density in the city. And while we're doing that, protecting the built environment as it is. But Barbara mentioned the Gans Creek conversation. And not everyone may be aware of what that was about. It was about putting in new bike paths at the Gans Creek Park. And there was concern about the impact on the environment at the park, and in particular, the stream, the Gans Creek itself. It was a fascinating conversation. It went on for a good, long while. And part of the reason that it was so interesting was that there was so much passion about this issue. And there was also a great deal of agreement at the same time. It really came down to what is the approach going to be to how we develop these bike paths in Gans Creek Park? Well, there was a decision to build a couple of the paths and then to put off the third that went south of the area that's being built out. And this came about because people in the audience were willing to compromise about it. Parks and Rec was willing to compromise about it. But I think that it illustrated this passion that we all have about our environment. We do love our trails. We do love our parks. We love the wild environment in which we live. To maintain it is going, as I said, is going to continue to be a great challenge because of the rate at which we're growing. And we already have a housing crisis. So I would support the kind of view of our parks that you all were suggesting, and that Parks and Rec be involved in that, the Office of Sustainability be involved in that as well. And that we do everything we can to love and support and to maintain what we so much love and support already.
Yeah, I would have to say that I would, I believe that in the idea of annexation and development and park decisions, there definitely needs to be a lot of consideration in those needs. It's very essential for long-term environmental sustainability, resilience, community well-being. Reasons being protecting the local wildlife, biodiversity. We have a lot of areas that are very interconnected with wildlife areas. The trail, I see deer walking down the trail almost every time I ride my bike. That's interconnected with Twin Lakes. And then that's interconnected with the trail that goes to Stadium Boulevard. And then that is interconnected to a creek that runs all the way up Stadium to basically Crestland Avenue with woods that connect there. And then also pops out to the Quonass Park areas. And that, I mean, just have to be aware of what connects to what in the community. Also, it helps with safeguarding the water quality and stream health and decreasing impervious surfaces. It would be very important. The next question I'm gonna answer, talk about something that I did as a college student that was a funnel project that I did then. Also, parks and in natural areas reduce heat islands, I'm sorry, urban heat islands, improve air quality, water quality, and protect those forest wetlands and prairies that helps toward carbon-to-reuse climate change impacts. Also improves public health and the quality of life. Access to green space, as we have in Columbia, is fantastic. I am probably on the trail when it's above 50 degrees as often as I can be. It's a little rule, I don't ride my bike under 50 because I'm not a cold-blooded person. You know, the natural areas provide all the recreational activities that we all love and enjoy here in Columbia. You know, I think we should establish a growth plan that is conservation-oriented. Some watershed and stream protection adaptations, some incentive to develop sustainability with developers that are building these developments around the city of Columbia. And then also use some green infrastructure with native plant habitats instead of grass for parks and floodwater.
All right, we're gonna have Laura come up to read the next question.
All right. Currently, the UDC lacks a residential zoning category that is lower density than R1. Would you support establishing a zoning category that would mandate much less impervious surface and require cluster development, increased green space, larger stream buffers, et cetera? You have two minutes for this one.
Yes, I, so, and I'm interpreting this question, I hate to say this, I really didn't understand the question, but I'm interpreting it in this way. My background, as I said earlier, is not-for-profit. But I have a degree in residential design and construction from the University of Missouri. And one of our projects my senior year was to take three infill lots in Columbia, Missouri, and design student housing for the small student housing, before tiny houses, imagine that. Something that was efficient.
Something that was efficient, you know, passive solar energy was, were the buzzwords at that point in time. Not a lot of, not a lot of solar-powered stuff besides windows and tile floors. But we designed this space that would house 15 students in three lots and three small, or four small houses. That is something that is desperately needed, something that gives people efficiency of living and will allow them lower cost, but then a lower impact on our environment. The one thing that we used, and this is, you know, right in the 80s, so they were just developing these impervious surfaces that you would put down instead of concrete. And using things such as that helped with the natural runoff and such, and you'd actually know your driveway, which was kind of cool, I thought.
Somewhere in my pile.
This to me comes around again, and you'll have to forgive me, I spend a lot of time thinking about and working on issues related to housing. And, you know, there are some things that we have done to increase density, there's been some new zoning changes that will allow for smaller lots on which homes can be built, for instance. I think when it comes to impervious surfaces, that's something I have a great interest in also. And one of the ways that I've looked at that and things that have come before the council is the requirement for parking. And I think that we've already addressed that in a few ways successfully, where there have been one or two, or three or more projects that have come before us where we've reduced the amount of parking that would be required. So those, all those kinds of things, I think, need to be done. But we need to be looking at our zoning code altogether. So this would be one of those things that we would want to look at while we're looking at all the other things that are going to encourage the kind of construction that we need in the community and the kind of construction that has a lesser impact on the natural
So I am still learning all of the zoning terminology, so I'm not completely clear on what lower than R1 means. That doesn't mean I won't study and figure it out and be able to speak to it later. That being said, I obviously, I recognize the importance of green space, and I have to speak specifically to the stream buffers just because I've talked about my dad all evening. And we actually had a conversation in, just FYI, which I think I mentioned this later too. The recommendation for stream buffers is 50 feet on each side of a small stream and 100 feet on each side of a large stream. So we're going to need to decide what our definition of that is within our city. But, so, I'm learning. And for the impervious surfaces, I think they're a good idea, I've seen them in use before. Because I'm an occupational therapist, I will always go back to accessibility. So as long as the impervious surfaces are accessible services, meaning that everybody can safely utilize them, whether they are pedestrian, bicyclist, using a wheelchair, a roller, or have their kids in strollers and wagons, I would be in favor of using them. So that's, that's what I'm doing.
Okay, so to answer the first part of the question, yes, I would support it. And the second part with regards to impervious surfaces, there's like, there's an overwhelming body of evidence that supports the negative relationship between impervious surfaces and the environment, but no one's going to suggest that we don't have roads or anything like that, so we have to explore where our options are. There are a few, there are several different families of forest pavement materials, and some of them are, you know, things like open jointed pavers that can be filled with turf or aggregate. You have soft paving materials like wood or mulcher crust shell. And you can look into other things such as, sorry, that's where it was in my notes. Yeah, but just material that use the same components and manufacturing processes as conventional impervious materials. And that can be done by working with local landscape architects and engineers at university. So the importance of trend of converting a lot of these impervious surfaces to permeable surfaces is that it would take, offload a lot of the strain on our stormwater collection system, and would also go a long way to having cleaner waters that are going back into our stormwater collection system. So I actually do have a few things with regard to this specifically. So in terms of policies regarding impervious surfaces, I believe that we should have a practice where any new establishment or permeable pavement installation should be combined with vegetation or naturally, or local stormwater collecting plants and vegetation. There should temporary, should have temporary conversion cover established within 14 calendar days if some type of permanent vegetation cannot be established with a new commercial lot. We should also have a collection of sediment and erosion controls put in place to help with the removal of, oh, sorry.
So I think a lot of this would have been much easier to do in the 70s and 80s before Columbia was listed on all the covers of the magazine as great, as one of the great places to live in America. I think that our rapid growth has really overtaken us, and I think that has limited our ability to take the thoughtful time to develop neighborhoods in a meaningful way that would work with the environment and would not cause the increased heat with all the sediment that, you know, we know exists and causes problems with neighborhood and environmental living. And so I think that, you know, we should look as much as we can to less impervious surfaces, and we should also look to how we can creatively create neighborhoods to increase density where people can live, you know, as they're looking for houses that they can afford, small, tiny houses, geo houses, all kinds of houses that I've been researching. And then also, I have also seen that there are neighborhoods that are looking into having one giant backyard, and then, you know, all the houses are in a circle around that, and how to creatively coexist in ways, because land is finite. So we have to really take care of the land that we have and look at creative ways to coexist. And so I would be open to looking at those ways in a meaningful way. But again, unfortunately, everybody knows about Columbia, and so they've moved here faster than we can have those meaningful conversations.
Thank you. Well, thank you. I'd say, I'm not sure we're using the terminology correctly, like less than R1, because then that makes me immediately think of rural development where like everyone's really far away and you can't walk to your neighbor's house as easily. I think what we're talking about is creating the flexibility in our mixed-use zoning to make sure that we're greening it, that we have opportunities for natural areas and permeable pavement as part of our building codes requirements. I say that because I think about, I mean, time is your point, the model already exists and it's Europe, right? When we think about London neighborhoods where they have the green space and then kind of circling around, and in the Netherlands, those examples, as well as the sort of circular neighborhoods working together with one another. You know, lately, we have been talking about how to create flexibility in our zoning. Traditional zoning in Columbia, if you wanted to try to control what was developed there, what it looked like, and how you put in regulations or requirements for additional green spaces or different things, would be a planned development. Well, then that created a lot of time, and we have a lot of tracts of land in Columbia that are still under this PUD that no one can build on right now until we get rid of it to do this. And so I think about the updates that we're making right now, it started from our assessment with the county, which is identifying areas around town that we could change up the zoning, and then how do we create that flexibility in there? And some of the things you can do is by giving bonuses for if they do something above and beyond, right? If they're putting in, for instance, there's a neighborhood north of Rockbridge where we allowed them to put a little bit more housing in there because they did permeable driveways. Driveways have permeable pavement in it so that the water is actually being absorbed on site rather than going into Rockbridge. And so how do we create those sort of bonuses and densities to then show the model of what can be? So we talk about that envisioning that you can do in environmental design, showing people what it could look like, so that then we can start to get our, I guess, bonuses, but more of just to have that development happen like we want it to in our community. And I see.
All right, thank you. We're going to have Josh come up next to read question six.
Thank you. I'm Jackson, stepping in for Josh, one of the thousands of Colombians that does not own a car, so I thought this one is pertinent. So you have three minutes to answer this. How can Columbia encourage walking and biking while discouraging traffic in the city? What role do you see public transit playing within our transportation landscape? And would you support keeping the buses free? Please answer all of those.
Three minutes. Okay. I was already missed on the second one, third, fair, got it. So I think for the first part, one of the ways to discourage traffic, but more of like discourage as much like automobile use and more walkable and bikeable options, one of it is by investing in our infrastructure, right? So right now, making sure that we're putting in, not just, I think you all were saying we passed a resolution a couple of years ago to do livable streets rather than just complete streets, this idea about connecting our communities and not just thinking about sidewalk, curb, bike lane, 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 side, or you know, bike lane, sidewalk, but actually thinking about how do different streets as we design actually connect people together? And one of the things that comes into combination with both when we think about transportation is transit-oriented development. So not just the infrastructure to get people from place to place, but also how do we incentivize additional density around areas where people are already traveling, preferably on a bike or a bus route? We had a study recently done by a transit consultant that estimated we could reach our goals of having a really high-quality transit system in 30 years. And that was because, you know, a lot of it was there like, well, we're just going with the resources we have and the way development's been happening. Well, yes, of course, if we don't change anything, yeah, you're right, it's going to take 30 years to get there. But if we change some of our zoning to allow for more transit-oriented development and continue to incentivize our transit system with fare-free rides, but also partner. So when I look at a transit authority idea for our community, transit authority means you're buying into a system that is providing access to housing, into jobs, into schools, and recreation. And so I've been in conversations for the last two years with the University of Missouri as they're looking at how are they going to address some of their parking issues, right? Like us, they have a lot of parking garages that they have to pay for and maintain. How do we then really connect people so they have transportation options to get around town? So what can we add in with students to have them have where the bus system, they're helping pay for it, and it gets more places in town? And at the same time, for major employers, we're working on our first last mile project right now with employers where we're giving funds to help them do this. I just applied for a million-dollar grant to the Bloomberg philanthropies for their mayor's challenge, and what I'm proposing to them is that it's a micro-transit pilot. So this idea could help us take, rather than just a bus main on a fixed route, but what could we do for more on-demand opportunities? Because in reality, I think what we need to do is figure out, are we going to innovate to really change the trajectory of where we're going with getting people around town, rather than just assuming that we'll just keep working on this tiny little thing we're working on and that we'll get something different, because we haven't experienced that yet. Can I answer all the questions, Jackson? You still have seconds?
Please, Jackson, make sure I've answered them too. Okay, all right. So this has been a very interesting night because all the questions are like question one, and then there's five questions within question one. So I apologize if I missed any of them, it was not my intent. Okay, so public transit in Columbia, as you know, is not done well. None of us would like to ride for four hours to get around town to do any sort of thing, and especially those who are homeless. And they have expressed that to me. And so I just think that we need to look at the European city model and see how they have gone about creating a public transit system that is functional and efficient. And so people will not use our public transit in the way that we would like unless they can get somewhere without waiting a long time. With that, people are using Uber and Lyft to whatever degree they feel comfortable doing. Another thing downtown could be a trolley that would take people back and forth, that would possibly help, again, carpooling. I would say in general, the safety of bikers in Columbia is something I have heard for years and years. I have had friends that unfortunately have been hit by cars, and they are experienced bikers, and with the distraction of the cell phones, that has only increased, even though I know the rule has started January 1. And I think that, you know, in the good spirit that is frequently Columbia, you know, they will say, all right, we're going to put a bike lane here on a street like on Ron's that does not have space for a bike lane. And so then you have cars navigating against a lake and a bike lane, and it's just completely unsafe for all involved. And so I think that, you know, if we would have bike lanes where it's actually, there's space for bikes, or if there, if we build larger streets to begin with, I think that would help a lot. And then I believe that the thing about the free buses, is that the last one? Okay, free buses, okay. So again, the issue is free buses and safety. I know that it would be ideal if the buses were free. However, I have heard concerns from bus drivers, I have heard concerns from citizens riding the buses, that they do not feel safe on the buses. And then the other thing about it is, and this is just an outcome of where we are in humanity, if people were on the bus to go from point A to point B, you know, there'd be a natural transition, but some people are just riding it all day, and so then there's not space for the other people. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your question. So a few things, I would say that the city can encourage walking by expediting the sidewalk master plan that was already in place, and prioritizing the construction on the north side where residents are most burdened with low walkability. In terms of encouraging biking, I would recommend constructing at least one bike, or at least one bike pod per ward, and these bike pods would just simply require a user to download an app, get verified through a quick and easy process like uploading their driver's license, and they would become members of the Columbia Bike Pod Network, or whatever you want to call it. So when you get to the bike pod, I, so when you get to the pod, you just tap open door in the app, and it would be a free system that allows any verified person to open the doors, walk in, and park a bike. These bike pods would serve as a one-stop shop to remove as many barriers as possible in which the city would handle the planning, the finance, community relations, manufacturing, design, and operations. The bike racks present would come in two varieties. The pod should hold about 15 to 20 bikes on one side, you would have hanging hook racks on the other side, you would have lift-assisted racks created that can lift bikes that are up to around about 75 pounds. Each pod would come equipped with video cameras and the aforementioned ID verification system so that we know every person that goes in and out of the facility. It should have self-locking chains on racks, and users can also bring in their own locks if they want to. Each verified customer would have insurance over there, bicycle provided by the city, so if your bike does get up and walk away, the city would send you a check to help you buy a new one. And it's a funnel project to keep it free for residents. The model would rely on advertising and budget appropriations, not customer fees. And yes, these buses should remain free, especially while the service is so spot.
To encourage walking specifically, our sidewalks have got to be accessible, they have to be in good repair, and they need to be safe. To the point of sidewalk master plan, that is, has been a very slowly progressing plan, and I know this just from seeing the Disabilities Commission, are the ordinance for the disabilities Our, the ordinance of the Disabilities Commission was not to discuss sidewalks or to monitor sidewalks, but we talk about it every month. And so this is something I've become very intimately familiar with. And the movement on that plan has been mind-numbingly slow as far as having sidewalks, making sure they're accessible, those types of things. So we need to have those in place. We, going back to city design, when you're thinking about a walkable-bikeable community, the services that we need to utilize have to be within a reasonable walking and biking distance. And Ward 3 is largely residential, it's pretty spread out. There's not, there's, you know, we have Clark Lane where a lot of the businesses are, but we have, I guess, you know, King Street has some of the medical clinics. But when you're thinking about the services, if you need to take your kid to the doctor or if you need to get your kid to Battle High School, that's not walkable. I don't know if any of you have been out on East St. Charles, but if you wanna walk, may that ought to be ever in your favor. So the, you know, we have a lot of work to do in Ward 3 in regards to making a walkable community. And if we can't, if our city can't move towards these walkable neighborhoods, then absolutely public transit is going to come into play here. And there's been work on efficiency, driver shortages, all those types of things. It's been going on for a very long time with public transit. And we really, I'm looking forward to digging into that. And I'm gonna go back to a previous point with the trail system. Making sure that we're building on a trail system, I really feel that that's very essential. I'm very interested to see what happens with the I-7063 connector because that's gonna be shifting things around a bit. And I'm interested to see, I'm hopeful that some of the sidewalks that they're adding and air will be able to be connected to our trail system at some point. And maybe that could be a model moving forward to really focus on safe pedways. As far as keeping public transit free, I think that's great because it makes it more financially accessible for everybody. But at the same time, when we're talking about improving the transit system as well as paying for our drivers and the mechanics who service the buses and any other related city employee who works on our buses and public transit, we may need to do grants, we may need to actually start charging some fees for that. Because I do wanna make sure all of our city employees are making a livable wage. And I know that is, bus drivers don't always fall under that category.
One of the great things about where I live is that I live in a very walkable neighborhood. I can walk to the library, I can walk to a grocery store, to a drugstore, I can get down. When True Falls happens here soon, my wife and I will be walking back and forth into town to be a part of True Falls. And it's made me appreciate that all the more. I used to live in a different part of the city where that wasn't really true. Not much at all to walk to, if anything, why not? The bank, I could walk to the bank. And that was about it. It's caused me to appreciate it all the more and to also want that for more people in our community. And that's challenging when you already have a built-out city. But there are things that we can do, and there are things that we can. The sidewalk master plan is going to come up again and again. And it's something that I've been aware of and learned a lot more early in my term on council. It seems to me that it would be great to just go ahead and bite off a big piece of money and put it toward, just do the whole sidewalk master plan. That's not likely to happen. But I think that we need to move the sidewalk master plan along as quickly as we can. And I think especially in part of the city. I'm glad Barbara brought up transit-oriented development. I think when I drive along Paris Road, when I drive down Providence, when I drive up Range Line, I think about transit-oriented development and the possibility of being able to build housing in particular up in that area, but mixed-use development that is oriented with transit that makes it possible for people to move back and forth. We need to complete the trails and the extensions of the trails as much as possible. I-70 is one of those things that provides an opportunity, actually. But the city has been in consultation, conversation, argument with MoDOT about exactly what's going to go in there. MoDOT frankly doesn't wanna do as much in the way of sidewalks and pedways as we want to see. So council has continued to encourage our staff to negotiate well with MoDOT about that. And the trails in that particular, and that issue in particular is gonna be very important that we complete those trails and make it possible for people to move from north to south and south to north, back and forth across I-70. As to free transit, that's been a really great thing, but it hasn't always been free. And when it wasn't free, there were ways to address that for people who might struggle to pay. While I was Executive Director of Voluntary Action Center, we provided a lot of bus passes for folks. Now, sometimes it was a little too difficult for them to get them. But there are ways to do that. The transit study itself, one of the things that council has been insisting on is that we take the studies that we receive and we do something with them. When we got a first report back on the transit study, there were some things about it that, well, there were a number of things actually that were lacking in the transit study. I didn't hear enough about micro-transit, for instance. So that's coming back to us soon, and I hope that we're gonna be, we'll see a little bit more creativity when it comes back to us this time.
So I'm gonna probably say just about the same thing, but, you know, with the sidewalk master plan, I believe that there needs to be a more aggressive. It needs to be more aggressive. I live off of, going home every day, I go down Broadway, hit Wales, which is a street that's about 100 yards long, and then Scott Boulevard. Every street in Colombia has like six different names sometimes, so. But no, I go that way. And I love the fact that they are redoing the sidewalk on Scott Boulevard. It is, it looks fantastic. Except when that road was built, the sidewalks on the east side of the road are horrible. They were not built with handicapped accessibility in mind, they were too small. They also had, if you look at it, they had to put an extension because they encapsulated the mailboxes. So they had to make sure that they were wide enough for a wheelchair to get around. Things planning like this is terrible. Lots of areas in the fourth ward were built in the mid-'50s to late-'60s. Many of them do not have sidewalks. They need to have sidewalks, we need to have walkable communities in our area. I mean, North Colombia the same way. The housing in that area was built about the same time as the housing that is just west of West Boulevard. So I think an aggressive adaptation of the sidewalk master plan and expanding it even more. It's interesting, and we just talked about impervious surfaces because I don't think it'd be a bad thing to make those sidewalks out of impervious surfaces because that would cause less issues with the homeowners, I believe, than having them have an actual sidewalk under the yard that they didn't have before. The busing system in Colombia, I have a staff member that does not have a vehicle. He lives within a mile of where I work. He walks most of the days, but he cannot ride a bus because it doesn't go by his house. Busing in Colombia has been great that it's free. I remember playing a quarter to get from the bus stop that was three-quarters of a mile from my house to get downtown. But the expansion of the bus routes is essential. We have veterans that live in low-income housing that have to walk three-quarters to a mile to catch a bus because they don't have, they don't have a vehicle to go to their appointments, have to be in hospital.
We're gonna have Laura read the next question, please.
Yeah. All right. What major climate change-related or environmental protection infrastructure projects would you like to see undertaken in Colombia in the next five years? Options to consider for your answer could include, but are not limited to, renewable energy integration, smart grid and advanced metering infrastructure technology, building retrofits, urban heat island mitigation, stormwater management systems, floodplain restoration, restoring natural floodplains, sewer overflow elimination, lead-water pipe replacement. Obviously, you can't get to all of those in two minutes, but that's your Olympic target.
Okay, obviously, we wanna do everything on that list, so. I truly believe that the most important thing for infrastructure would be the advanced metering infrastructure that was mentioned. I know that Colombia is, is looking at it. I believe there was a study a couple of years ago that was, an RFP was put out to do a study for it. But I think we're behind. I think we, we need to move faster with this because of the benefits of what it has. Actua Villar, real-time monitoring of your energy. You know, faster detection of outage and restoration, which we are going to have in Colombia without some of our infrastructure changes that we really need. Response in grid efficiency, and then it really supports integration of renewable energy and balances the power supply. There's a lot of challenges, the upfront costs are enormous. You know, it also requires a lot of computer security to integrate it. And then a lot of people don't wanna change. I work with a lot, I work at the VA Hospital, that's why I mentioned veterans. But I have a lot of veterans that don't know what this is because they have a flip phone and they've never used a smartphone. You know, they don't wanna change what they don't have. So I really think that that is the most important thing that we can do in our community to help with our energy efficiency and environmental related projects.
Well, pretty much yes to all of the above. Some of these are gonna be more challenging than others. Some of these things are already underway. There is, there are plans in place, at least for the issuing of an RFP, a request for proposals on smart meters. And we are far behind on that. We have, we have other, we have neighboring cities in our state that are much further along on that. And Amaran is much further along on that, in fact. So hopefully, we'll see that RFP, if it hasn't been issued, it will be issued soon. We'll see that come back and begin the installation of that. And I think that that will help in a lot of different ways, but, and not at least among the conservation of energy, but also conservation of water. And we don't talk about water a whole lot in this community. And I think the reason for that is we just have an abundance of it because of the river. We have a lot of water that's at our disposal. But this is a concern for me, I have to tell you. I think that it's going to be an issue in the future with climate change. And water is, we've seen water an issue in California, Wes and I can do that. But out west in particular, but we're not completely insulated from that. And I think it's something we need to keep in mind. We've also looked at the Impact Urban Heat, Barbara mentioned earlier, the ShowMeTheMe that this Office of Sustainability has done and the ways that we can mitigate that. Also, I think it's very important to keep in mind that whatever we're doing in all of these areas, we are not an island unto ourselves. I had a conversation today with someone about sewers and the county. The county has a master plan that they've been working on. There was a great, there was a meeting in this room, as a matter of fact, about that a few months ago that some of you may have attended. And what the county does is going to have an impact on us. What we do is gonna have an impact on the county. And it already has, it already, and it will continue to. As we annex new properties and new land into the city, for instance, we found that. What the county has done with sewers in particular doesn't exactly meet up with our standards, and then we have to, we have to address that.
Yes, I think all of these are needed. I think sometimes it's important that after we go through this great big long list, it can be a little overwhelming, and we need to make the decision to start. And sometimes you need to start with what, you know, just pick one and start. So I specifically really would like to see the renewable energy integration initiatives. I think discussions around and movement towards installing solar panels on our public buildings would be a great place to start. I've seen other cities, actually, when they have, they actually have the covered buswalks, actually have solar panels on all of the covered buswalks. So there's ways to be creative and think about where we can put these things to provide more renewable energy sources. I'm also very interested in the urban heat island mitigation, and I'm always in favor of planting more trees, as long as they're not forever fierce. I do, I have to take this time, I'm telling you, if you guys wanna talk with my dad, let me know. I'll be able to give his contact information. I'm sure he'd be happy to come out of retirement and talk to you about all of these things and much more eloquently than I did. But I do wanna, we talked at great length about floodplain restoration. He's like a professor, so. It was somewhat painful, but just so you have the information from his brain, you know, I talked about the boppers earlier. The science that he's studied regarding floodplain restoration or creek, going back to the natural snake-like formation of a creek before we got involved with it. Studies have really shown that the money that is put towards that and the time, like it requires about 50 years at least for that to go back to a more natural state. And the science is not supporting that, they are supporting the boppers, though. So the 50 feet on each side for small, one of the feet on each side for big. So I just wanted to pass that along, and if you want his number, let me know. I'm sure he'd be happy to chat.
Okay, thank you for the question. And a few of the things that I would like to focus on in terms of infrastructure projects for sustainability over the next five years, I would like to see a 15%, 10% to 15% increase in the tree canopy of the north side. This is crucial in protecting our water quality and water quantity as well as the air quality over, as well as the air quality, especially for residents that live in an area of town where all the heavy industrial pollution takes place. Because that is definitely a case of a manifestation of the haves and have-nots in Colombia because if you look where all the industrial stuff is, it's on the north side. I would also like to explore the options for an expanded network of tree trenches near our stormwater collection sites to offload some of the stormwater collection as well as working with business owners to cover, I'd say, around about 70% of their rooftops with either solar panels or stormwater collection gardens. And also, there'd be something that we could work with, with the real estate developers to kind of provide either funding or some type of frameworks for which they could create some of these stormwater collection sites on their residential properties to kind of offload some of the strain on the system as a whole. Sorry. All right. And let me see if I, oh, and I mean, I mentioned earlier reducing the food waste by 60% and reducing our, aiming for 20% reuse rate of all of our waste products. And we have to do, oh, and establishing a no-waste commo portal on the city's website that could be also used to, I'm sorry, that would also help businesses and schools work towards zero waste, providing them with resources and support to implement enhanced waste management and diversion practices.
Okay, so my priorities would be renewable energy integration, urban heat island mitigation, more green vegetation in town, stormwater management systems, and then also the lead pipe, lead-water pipe replacement because I feel like that has to do, you know, with what we want as humans going forward. And with the, the part about the, what we could do downtown is I don't see why we couldn't pretty quickly and immediately start putting those urban gardens on the top of all the buildings downtown. Because I think that would help very quickly with getting extra fresh produce, not only to the restaurants downtown, but also to our neighbors who live downtown. I think, you know, there's lots of creative things that we could do immediately. And it would help all of us as well as with the going, looking at the urban heat island mitigation. I agree that, you know, we need to look at that, especially in the north because probably when- when the north part of town was developed, they had not thought through all of the things scientifically that we know today and the repercussions of having those industries near neighborhoods. So I think we need to really look at what we can do up north to mitigate what, you know, has happened in our urban sprawl. So, thank you.
Yeah, so I kind of prioritize by five from the ones provided plus added my own. I will say, just as a quick note on the AMI, I think I did look, Nick, and yeah, the RFP, they're starting with water meters first because they feel that would be the easiest way, and then measure rather than electric meters for the NBS metering. But this is, it allows to have real-time rates and really help figure out how people can be incentivized to use energy at the right time when it's less peak for us. I say that to say assessment like .5, but then in order. So I have renewable energy expansion. We recently went out, we're putting solar panels on the Armory, which is right over here, downtown one of our historic building stone, and have been looking into a proposal for over the lot then, as well as a parking lot. You mentioned the bus sort of coverages, Jackie. That, as well as expanding our community solar program. So last year, we generated around 23 kilowatt, 23,000 megawatt hours in community solar that we then sell back to our customers. So expanding that, as well as we, we've been making upgrades to our own city-owned facilities. We have our own benchmarking program for our city-owned facilities with the goal of reducing those. I say those two things, though, because those are also two things that we have federal grants out for, that we were awarded, and I don't know if we're going to get any more with the recent executive orders. So I say that to say, you know, we've been working on these things, but obviously, when something happens at a federal level, it can majorly affect our progress here locally. 30 seconds, okay. My next one, so I have floodplain and stormwater management. A big part of that is for resilience. In 2022, we experienced multiple rainstorm events that have ended over $1 million in damage that we had to request, again, FEMA funds from. You're about to say stop, aren't you? Okay. Urban heat island mitigation, expanding our Arbor Day Grant Foundation that we started last year by doubling our trees. I think that's potentially on plan, even regardless of no federal funding. And then I added energy efficiency for low-income housing, because that's one of the biggest things I think would make a big difference in our stuff.
All right. Thank you, everyone, so much for your answers. We are going to, for the sake of time, skip the last question. And instead, we are going to ask that each of the candidates give a one-minute, one-minute closing remarks. So we're going to start with Barbara, following the ping-pong method.
Okay. Well, I just want to say thanks again, both for hosting this, but also, these are, obviously, topics and issues that are very close to my heart, having been sustainability manager for 11 years before I decided to do more work for less pay as the mayor. And everyone hates me now, rather than just, no, I'm just saying. I will say, you know, as we talk about these important issues, I think one of the most important things that I found is the collaboration needed. And this is collaboration and in some cases compromise, where we might not get everything perfect right away, but working gets us better farther than we go along. And I'll say, I'm proud to represent Columbia on a regional and a national and global stage working on climate action. We advocated both within our state region, but also within the US to get resolutions passed to continue working in this space. As we knew in 2017 with the, when the US was proposed to pull out of the Paris Climate Agreement, Columbia said we were still in, and it was that collaboration and that working that really brought us forward.
So with my 30-year advertising and public relations background, I think what we really want is we want more people educated on why doing the best environmental ideas would be the best for all of us. And what I see happening is that unfortunately, a lot of these ideas are in the beginning stage. 100 years from now, we're going to know which ones we should have put more time and energy into and which ones we shouldn't. And the other part of the dynamic is that as people read about the various things and they read about the consequences of where we are right now with our trials to be more sustainable and focused on long-term solutions, there's also the part that they learn about that, again, we're working on fixing. And so I think if we can work together and educate each other, it will help us move forward in a positive direction through that education.
Thank you for all the questions tonight and for coming out on this cold evening. As mayor, I would seek to fund and sustain enhanced bio-monitor and testing services for community residents in order to maintain a community toxic registry. I would like to fund and operate local health clinics to provide health care, nutrition, and mental health services for impacted residents that show above reference range levels for toxic contaminants and a correlated respiratory disease and cancer, respiratory disease and cancer study. I would like to, as I mentioned earlier, see to with that, all of the air quality monitoring sites on the north side are active. And I would like to work with the school system to potentially align environmental justice curriculum into our school programs, to offer a different pedagogy for students and adult learning. And also align with culturally competent mental health redress as environmental injustices place undue stress upon communities of low income.
Well, thank you so much for this forum tonight. I think the thing I appreciate the most about this forum is the amount of information that was forwarded to the candidates. It really allowed me, you know, because you enter into things thinking you kind of know the basic. And having enough information that was provided to us as candidates was so very valuable and helped me to really dig in to the ideas and the thoughts and the history and made me realize that I have a lot more questions that I should be asking. But most importantly, I so appreciate the information and the discussions that we're having because it's going to help me, when we're talking about zoning and city development and expansion, all these things, I have all of these points now to keep in mind as I'm making those decisions. And so I'm just very appreciative of the efforts of this group to bring this forum together and to provide information to the candidates that you have. Very grateful. Thank you.
My thanks, all the groups that helped make this happen tonight. It's interesting to me that there seems to be a lot of general agreement on the panel tonight about a lot of things. And I think that that reflects the values that we have as a community. We love the, we love the natural environment and we want to preserve it. And there are a lot of things that we need to do to make sure that we do that. And we've talked about a lot of that, but, you know, there were some things we didn't talk about tonight. Composting, I love my compost bag. We didn't talk about recycling. And those two things in particular come to mind for me in Parker, because these are things that always keep the environment in mind for me. And it's a daily thing that I do. And we need to encourage all of that so that people have the environment in mind. We didn't talk about some other things like, I actually think we ought to put solar panels on garages. The panels that are going in my house are going to go on the structure in the backyard. We could do similar things to that on garages downtown. So another thing I would, I know that phrase, "Ask me about my grandchildren." If you want to ask me about my grandson, I'll be glad to tell you, but also you can ask me about my EV because I love that baby.
Yeah, I want to thank the, the groups, just like everybody did. A great group of, great collaboration that we did to put this together. I have to say, Jackie was exactly right. I learned a lot from what was provided, a lot of things I didn't know. One of the best things, in fact, I answered a question for the Sierra Club questionnaire. I said one of the recommendations, we need to put solar panels on every garage that we have in the city and in every parking lot of the city. You know, that, I think that's important. Ashwin gives covered parking. But I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It was a good experience and I learned a lot from the information that was given to us so that we could answer the questions for you. So thank you very much.
Can I just say, okay, everybody remember to shovel your sidewalks tomorrow.